We'll call the meeting to order for city council Thursday, November 5th. Roll call.
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Lindell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff is absent.
Great. Can we do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
All move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And right, we're going to have a closed session right now, or open a special session for the public hearing of Resolution 2513 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with the taxes. So we'll open the meeting, it's now six, that thing don't say, well, a little after With that, do we have anybody here that is here because of delinquent water or utility charges? Do we have anybody here? Do we have anybody here? Hearing that we, no one is here, I suggest we close the public hearing and go to regular council meeting. That's Josephson. So.
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2513.
I'll second.
Okay. Bill and Lindell, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we have Steve Dablo here for the Historical Society presentation.
Good evening. I'm actually getting a little choked up right now. A couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call from someone who had just watched a video online that Channel 12 helped us do when the trolleys were in town. And, you know, I designed a tour, we'd never done one before, and imagine that they got a little longer because I was giving it than they could, and they were back to back to back to back, like four hours. But I had time after each tour to make a shameless pitch for donations and a gentleman, sorry, who grew up in Cannon Falls and told me he was a good friend of my father's and they were in the same high school class, called up and wanted to make a donation to help pay for the White House, $50,000.
Holy moly, that is great.
I don't know how to, the gentleman that donated the money, I want to get back to him. Was Jerry Williams, and he is one of the sons of Doc Williams.
Oh.
And we've entered into a number of dialogues, and it's been real fun for me, especially talking a little bit about two 13, 14-year-old boys hanging around Cannon Falls and what they, they were doing and stuff. But Jerry will tell you, he really appreciated growing up in Cannon Falls and was more than happy to do that. We're also going to be getting a few more of Doc Williams' items, one being a bag, some being some diplomas and stuff like that, so it's a real blessing. Anyway, the goal for repaying the city was $186,000, and with pledges and received money, we are now at $146,701. And Neil says that we're pretty close on the math on that, almost spot on, so money received, including this $50,000, will be $120,636. And we're hoping to bring in a few more checks in just the next month or so, so it's been a real challenge during the COVID, and I'm just happy to give you guys that check. One of the things I want to tell you about the Historical Society, because I listen to Kyle talk about the chamber all the time, and we never get a chance to talk about us a little bit, but it's been hard being closed, especially since a lot of people that would come to the museum are the high-end, most vulnerable and stuff like that, and we just haven't been able to find our way to be open, although we will meet with people. But I think because of COVID, people are going through a lot of their belongings that they want to clean up and do that, and we've had a lot of donations. One of them I'm really excited about, I chased it for seven years, it's known as the community bobsled, and I don't know, John, if he was here, would know about it. And I'm going to be doing an interview about it, but it was a bobsled that came to Cannon Falls in the early 40s, about like a toboggan without the curl on the front, and it's got runners on it. And it went down both Spring Garden Hill and back when Highway 19 came into town, and it didn't turn on First Street, it turned on Second Street. And so there'd be a lot of sledding from the top of Mill Street on down. I think it was Jim Soul Senior told me he holds the record of making it to the bandshell from the top of that hill. Yes, wow. Yes, and we'll be talking about that. A fifth-grade teacher in Cannon Falls for many, many, many years, Ms. Wendell Schaefer passed away, and it's always tough to go through a deceased person's belongings, but her sister has been bringing stuff in, and I've talked to a lot of people that went through her class and remembers the, the book, The Box Car, children, you remember that? We have the book now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the book that she read from, and, and that's exciting. Lenaya Shokwist unfortunately passed away, she was one of the Shokwist twins that before Title IX, there was no path for her athletically, but she got recruited into a program called The Redheads and went around the country. Sports Illustrated says wonderful things, they got an eight-page article in a Sports Illustrated about that. Well, we haven't received it yet, but we've talked to Lynette, and we'll be getting Lynaya's uniform. One of them is sitting at the Basketball Hall of Fame, so we're going to have the other one, isn't that exciting? And we wrote a series of grants, we've got a few more to go, but I don't know if anybody realizes how important the Mineral Springs Sanatorium was to the ending of tuberculosis. I was a patient. You what? I was a patient. You were a patient? We have a lot of pictures. Yeah. Did you get that on the camera already? But it was, you know, I heard my parents talk about people coming from all over the world, and I, okay, so at Cannon Falls, really, but it was a male doctor that wanted, needed to do a, a test on a new antibiotic called streptomycin, and the county's agreed to do it out there, and that disease was cured first in Cannon Falls. Whoops. And so we've got people that are interested, and we're at a data gathering position, we've completed and, and received two grants, and we have an author working on it, and maybe six months or more, I don't know, Zach's doing it, but we will have a nice, heavily researched book on Mineral Springs Sanatorium. And I guess that's it. I could probably go on, I shouldn't, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You guys need anything from the museum, you let us know.
We're having, we've got another meeting coming up in just, just under two weeks, if you want to bring another pocketful of.
Okay. I just might, I just might. Thank you.
Thank you for doing, collecting all the money, Steve. Okay, consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adapted under one motion or presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as a council business. A, just and correct claims, accounting period ending October 29th, 2020. B, meeting minutes for October 20, 2020 city council meeting. C, Resolution 2514, accepting a donation of $25 from Elvina N. William Schmig G. for the police department. D, Resolution 2515, approving a cooperative snow removal agreement with MinDOT. E, approved fireworks permit for Chamber of Conference. F, Resolution 2516, accepting a transfer of CARES money from Leon Township for the ambulance department. G, Resolution 2517, accepting a transfer of CARES money from Bell Creek Township for the ambulance department. H, purchase ventilator and bi-level support for ambulance department. Do I hear any that want to come down? Nothing down? Everything's quiet?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, second, anybody? Okay, there's been a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
That's good. Okay, council business. A, farmer's market discussion. Who wants to open it up? You want it, Neil?
Back about three months ago, or maybe even a little more, this agenda item was brought before the council and, and was tabled until the, the end of the farmer's market season, that which would be the November, first meeting in November. So here we are, we did have a few conversations about the farmer's market, one with the Finance Committee, and, and Mary Jill actually has some ideas of, of what maybe would work and what maybe could be a compromise on, on that. I asked City Attorney Dave Kendall to put together some options for discussion purposes tonight, by all means, we don't have to make any decisions. We got till next March to figure this thing out if need be, so I think if we bring forth some of the options we can look at tonight, and Mary Jill, you may want to chime in on what you're thinking, and, and go over, and Dave is on Zoom, I see him up there, so he can help us out on some of the legalities of the, of the zoning and, and ordinances. So I think I'll just turn it over to Mary Jill.
Okay. At the, actually, I thought of this during that last meeting, that we were talking about this, but I didn't want to say anything because if it was a really bad idea, or we'd already looked into it, I didn't want to have someone say that. My idea for the farmer's market, for the downtown market, is to change its location, and if possible, the day of the week. And the reason for that, reason for changing the day of the week, is so that it becomes a complimentary market, not a competing market on Saturday morning. Now that, we don't have to do that, that's fine, but my idea is to move the market to John Birch Park, and to have it at the end of John Birch Park where the bandshell is. By the time the market gets going in the spring, the, the baseball fence is up, we would also have access, not that we would have to use it, and, or anything like that, but we could use that bandshell that we so rarely use, and have that going, not necessarily every week, but some, we could have spoken word, we can have skits, we can, you know, all sorts of things. But if we had it in an evening, say a three to eight, or four to eight, then it would be, it wouldn't be competing, plus you could be in both markets pretty easily, you wouldn't have to have twice the people to be in both. That's just my idea, I think it keeps it downtown, it's just as visible, it's nicer down there, it's shaded, it's pleasant, and then if vendors do want to sell on a different night, or a different time, they still can go in front of the fence in the entryway there, or be, you know, along, or even on, what is that, Third Street, Fourth, Fifth Street? Above the, above John Birch, you could be in that corner, there's room in there. But that's, that's my idea, it gets it out of the parking lot, and, but I think it takes it even to a nicer place, and it's only half a block away, that's, that's my idea.
I know I've been contacted by different groups in that, I think what we really need is get together with, like, the Bears and them down there, too. I know when you used to have the concerts or, or, no, movies.
Music and movies.
Yeah, I know they said that kids would get behind and.
They were, yeah, but that was also at night, this is, that was after dark, that they were doing that. I, I know, I hear what you're saying, you know.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm just saying that.
I know.
You know, there, there's some good things.
Right.
About it and that, but I think we need to get together and.
No, it's a good idea.
You know, see, Steve's here tonight, you know, he might have some ideas, or other people, so I think it would be a good thing to maybe organize and go a step more, I mean, I, I think the idea is there.
Mm-hmm.
Like, if it rains or something like that, I know Neil and I talked today, you know, bring it up on the west side, you know, the parking lot, going over the, so you could see over the fence there.
Right.
You know, that would be another.
Yeah.
Backup for you.
No, that's a good idea, too.
So.
What would we do, in the summer, there's a lot of baseball, so I just wonder, is this something we could have, we probably couldn't do it if there was a baseball game going on, so how would we?
There probably wouldn't be that much overlap, the games start at seven, so, I mean, you can have it from three to seven on a game night.
Okay.
If, if they even.
If it's a weeknight, you mean?
Yeah, if it's a weeknight, and you don't have to go with that either.
But now you were talking about possibly having music and.
Yeah, but that doesn't have to be while the games are on.
No, but different others.
Community band has played several times before Bears games, so we know how to.
Okay.
I do know that, a couple of things, first, as far as baseball folks are concerned, I'm sure there's something we can do along that, where the right field line ends and then the rock wall and up to the thing, there is a way that we can.
There'd be something.
Block that off.
Yeah.
And we'd also, at, at the Finance Committee, because we're all in favor of this idea, is, God, now I lost my train of thought, you know, you'd have the, most of the vendors that would come there, you know, the big gate there that you walk in, would bring their material, their product in with their vehicles, set up their tables and stuff, and then park across, in the parking lot. There are one or two vendors that operate out of their, directly out of their vehicles, so. So I know there's some concern there. But I think it's also a, a good compromise because of course as we, we're all kind of divided on this a little bit, you know, with the, the parking and the bicycle people. And I think we talked about a Thursday, a Thursday night because there were a couple of other cities nearby that were doing like Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Yeah.
You know, on a Thursday and we all, well, those of us who grew up here, we remember Thursday night used to always be downtown was open late and, you know, that kind of thing. And I don't know if next summer we could have too much in the way of, you know, entertainment type things because of COVID.
Yeah, that isn't the main concern.
You know, you get a couple of years to get it going. And then like Mary Jill said, it, it would allow vendors to do both late afternoon, evening, and also if they wanted to go out to Artisan. Because as I understand, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, Artisan Plaza's farmer's market will now be on its own, correct? So we just have to worry about what we're going to do with the downtown market and probably something along the line of, I would think, a permitting concept. Because we all know, unfortunately, we, outside of the parking and safety issue, we've had one vendor who, who has caused 99.9% of the problems there. And then we would have better control on that.
Mary Jill, I appreciate your idea of trying to come up with something that uses the band shell. I, I like that idea. I'll be honest, the movement over there and then the traffic, the scheduling around, you know, possibly baseball, all that stuff. Vehicles in there, the football field is still there. That stuff, I think it's almost like we're, I like the band shell. Everything else I think is questionable. I still sit in the camp of leave well enough alone. I've heard from residents that say, just leave it as it is. If we have two, one at Artisan Plaza, that's wonderful. Maybe the night of the week changes, but I think there's something to the charm of a Saturday morning. The people that come to town seeing it there, you know, we've got local family who sells lemonade and they still buy a permit and they donate all their profits.
No, I, I understand that too. I just, I was just, and kind of where it came from, the different night of the week thing was that I'm old enough and I know Morris is old enough and Bill and a couple of us are old enough to remember when the Cannon Mall first opened. And the ensuing years were constantly, it's not, it's being better done at the mall. No, it's better downtown. No, it's, it was a constant battle. And that's kind of where I was coming out with that. But it's, you know, it's just an idea. If you don't like it, you don't like it. But I'm also really wanting to get it out of that parking lot. I don't like it in the city parking lot. I remember that being in the farmer's market and you'd be in the market. And if a vendor pulled out early, five minutes later, there'd be a car in there with bikes. I mean, they don't care where you're supposed to park. Sorry, that's a vent. But I really, I'm not crazy about it in the parking lot. But if other people want to keep it there, we keep it there.
And I know also.
No harm, no foul.
Concern with, you know, the baseball and football folks. We do have to remember that John Birch Park is not a bomber park. It's not a Bears park. It's a city of Cannon Falls Park.
Right.
It'd be nice to have, you know, I tried a couple of years ago to get us to open up John Birch, but I got foo-fooed on that. It's our park. Let's, let's put it to use. We're not getting on the football field and the baseball field. I think we can stop.
Well, but where the fences and the uprights are, if we did do it.
But, you know. Okay, so like what you just said, Matt, what you just said, Matt.
Both?
You like the idea of the Saturday morning market. Well, there aren't any baseball games on Saturday mornings.
Sure, no, that's true.
So we could keep it on Saturday morning and put it in John Birch Park.
Now, the one thing too, though, the fence comes down the second week of August.
Hmm, it was up later than that this year, wasn't it?
No, that's what I talked to Bucky and he said that's when it comes down.
It may have been this year because football wasn't.
Oh, that's right. It wasn't normal. You're right.
Right.
Yeah.
One question.
That's one thing to think about.
The question I would have is, we would need somebody there, whether Diane or whoever's going to run it, to unlock the door. Who's going to be in charge of saying, you know, this band can play, this speaker can talk?
That's, that's way, that's way down the line. That's way down the line.
But that is going to be more work for the.
Right. And regarding the, you know, baseball fence being taken down in August some point, most of the entertainment type thing that might take place at the band shell is going to be June, July and August, usually May and September and October.
No.
It's weather wise, not as conducive for that.
And we're also not really talking about crowds, I don't think. You know, the most we ever had for music and movies might have been 150. And that was to see the Rochester Big Band play. So I don't think we're talking about just throngs of people that are going, but we can look at it, you know, even from week to week, if there's a problem. I just think it's a beautiful park. It's a beautiful use of it. But it's, but we could still, and Matt, you make a good point. The Saturday morning thing's good. We'd have less trouble with baseball on Saturday mornings.
So would it be okay with everyone if, Steve, do you want to say anything?
I have to?
You can sit.
I just, I just like to hear input.
Steve Josephson, I'm a vendor in the, in the market, have been for 20 some years. I think there's a value to the city of having a farmer's market in the parking lot. I know it's traditional, but I think there's a value there for the city. And I think safety is one of the selling points of having it in the parking lot because we block off through traffic four hours, eight to 12 on a Saturday. And then we're done. Twice this year, it did, the parking lot did fill up. Some of the people did go to the overflow. But I think most of the parkers, the vehicles don't know about that parking lot. And I suggested we have a sign that says there is overflow parking available. But it was only twice that it actually filled up. Because I was there every Saturday and I looked. I think there's a value for Cannon Falls and having it downtown. And I think there's a value to Cannon Falls to have it in the parking lot. Any questions? I think that's your decision tonight.
Thank you for all the stuff that you've done and all the amazing corn.
You know, when people talk, you got to take the mask off because I can't see who's talking.
Just, I want to add on to Mr. Josephson's comments there. I'm a strong advocate for leaving it the way it is. I think it's, you know, we all got the stuff in our packets. There, there's no way we have to discuss seven pages worth of crap stuff just to, just to have a few people downtown on a Saturday morning. And if, if, if it's, if it's safety related, you, you can get hit by going through your receipt after you leave soon as garage sale or you're coming out of the back of Keith Meyer's. The accidents don't care where you're coming from. They're, they're going to happen. And as far as, I just, I, I just want to leave it alone. I guess that's all I can say.
I'll make a motion that we approve option one and just keep it in downtown in the city parking lot.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Oh, you did. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, any more discussion?
Option one is essentially keeping it the way it is, but just adjusting some of the language with.
Language included farmer's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm for going downtown, so. So it's passes.
Did you vote, Morris?
Yeah, I voted for you. With, with that, I have a question. Would you? I, I have a question. Would you be willing to change it to say a Thursday afternoon and evening to still incorporate Mary Jill's complimentary idea? That they would be able to go to both?
Doesn't matter. I think if you're going to keep it the way it is, you should just keep it the way it is. I wouldn't move the timeline.
Then on top of that, if you're not willing to do that, what do we do about Mr. Molly? Because he thinks he's in charge. And I'm really irritated with him and he takes Mary Jill and I to task a lot.
Okay, that is not on our agenda. If that's something that we have to deal with in the future, we'll deal with it appropriately then.
I think we can have a preseason meeting, get all the interested vendors together.
Correct.
Sit down and just have a bull session.
Yep, fair point.
Like how much space and that because some are a lot more.
He was one of the big violators of that space thing. 10 feet is what you're supposed to have. He was taking 25, 30 feet.
Really?
Did he have that much to sell?
What does he sell?
I don't know. I don't know.
The real, well, I won't say.
No.
I'll work with the City Attorney, Mr. Kendall.
Get the language cleaned up.
Get some of the language put together.
Well, Ken, I'll discuss that with you later, but.
Okay.
There's, there's some ways around that.
I guess lost where we are. Okay, that's it for that one. The video server replacement body worn camera discussion. Who wants to, Mr. McCormick?
Sure. So if you recall, on September 15th, we had a discussion here at the council and it was tabled. Finance Committee met and they were split two to one on how to proceed. The two did not want to move forward with body cameras. So as this comes back, what I did was I separated the, basically the two different issues. The video server, while it could be used for the new body cameras, is currently being used for our squad video. So when the city switches to the new server, we won't have video storage for that. It was not designed for that volume of data. Because the recommendation from the vendor was to put the police video on a separate server, one for security purposes and two for cost effectiveness for the city. So in front of you, you see that it's been split into two separate things. The first discussion focuses on the replacement of that video server. And then the second one focuses on the body cameras. So as it relates to the video server, the city has not switched to their new server yet. When we had the conversations with the vendor on sizing that, we did ask that it be purchased to allow additional storage to be added if needed. So we could utilize that server for the video storage, but we would have to buy the additional size drives to do that. And then we would also need to purchase the software to run that video storage system. Because currently the server we have, when we purchased, as I explained to the administrator, when that was purchased was actually when we were running XP computers. And so it made its transition from XP to Windows 7 and then from Windows 7 to Windows 10. And Windows 10 is where we started having the problems with it. And so the problem we have is we can't access it through the city's network. We have to go to a single computer to sign in. Not very efficient, not very effective. Still gets us the ability to store it and withdraw it, but we can't do it from, like, so our records people have to burn CDs for defense and prosecutors. They can't do it from their desk anymore. They've got to go to this other computer to do that, which interrupts their workflow because before they would just do it while they were doing other things. Now they've got to stop, go, do just that and then go back. So what I'm recommending is that we move forward and replace the video server. What I did was I separated the proposal from WatchGuard, which included that video server, the supporting software from the parts of it that would have been body camera. And that cost is roughly.
13,500?
I'm trying to find the right page. Yeah, 13,500 roughly. Now, as I explained to the administrator, what I couldn't do was split that down into what storage would be needed for just the squad. So I would expect that if we lower the amount of storage, we wouldn't be as behind as much and that cost may come down. However, the storage that's there would accommodate the body camera. And so now I'll explain that part of it. So currently, we're, we have 17 cameras. We're currently using 12 of those in an operational stand, status. And of those 12, at the moment, we only have eight that are being used. Those cameras are each assigned to an individual officer. And the way that the system works is camera assigned to Neil gets plugged in. The system recognizes it and moves it into a file storage area for Neil. I plug in my camera, same thing happens, except it moves it to a file storage area for my files. Laura plugs hers in, same thing, except to Laura's. I can't see Laura's. Laura can't see mine. I can't see Neil's. The only one that can see those files are admin level. And that's how we're able to make the copies necessary for prosecution or defense, but we can't alter them. And the ability to track that activity exists at the server level. Even admin level can't see that. That was part of the thing that we, you know, learned back in 20, I don't remember if it was 17 or 18. But that's what that system does. It was never intended to have a video management system on it. It's all done at, what do they call it? Standard computer management platform, file management platform or process. So what I'm proposing is purchasing five of the V300 body cameras. These cameras have removable batteries, so when the batteries fail, we just put a new battery on rather than have to replace the unit. Currently, we have 17. Five of those, the batteries just don't last very long. That's why they're not in an active use status. As we go into this winter, I expect that number to grow. Fortunately, we've got a few on hand that we could switch to. But I was just reviewing a report this, this afternoon of something that happened over the weekend and the officer took a statement from the person, got done, went to turn it off and discovered that it had already turned off. So that happens. I'm not going to say it happens daily, but if it happens on one that's really critical, that's not as good. So what we'd like to do is move forward, replace our current body cameras, get rid of those. There may be an agency that would be interested in them. Maybe there's not. We've gotten our use out of them quite well. And then replace them with five cameras instead of 12 or eight. And the reason we can go to five is that the video management software has the ability for Neil to walk up, pick up a camera, type in the camera number identifying component to him and the squad that he's going to be driving. It then tells that squad, you use this camera. And that camera replaces the microphone that the officer currently walks out to the squad, picks up, puts on and wears through this shift. And then at the end of the shift, Neil comes back in, puts it back in the dock, consigns out of that camera. It unlinks from the squad. Everything gets offloaded during the course of the shift. And if we ever need it, we have the squad video and the body camera video that can be displayed side by side with a synced audio track that goes between the two of them. That to me is a tremendous benefit as far as law enforcement tools. So that would cost us 24. So, that would cost us twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. The other part of that cost that was in the larger bundled cost before is seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars, which is the video redaction software. Under state law, the video redaction software is not needed for the squad videos. It would only be needed for the body camera videos. And the only way that that body camera video can be released is if you're a subject of the data. A subject of a data is a person whose image or voice appears on it. Now, somebody can go to court and request it, and the court may grant it and order us to redact. That's when we would have to use that software. We haven't had that situation yet, but as they become more common, we expect that that may happen. And that's why we were building it in. We could delay that until we absolutely have to do it, and then, you know, buy it or purchase a, you know, a company to do it for us. It might be cheaper than owning the system, but, you know, it would be a cost. So, that is essentially what's in front of you, Council. What I'm requesting, regardless of how you feel on body cameras, is that we replace the video camera, video server system and the newest version of evidence library. That will allow our squad cars to continue to function and capture and store data. Without it, once that server goes offline, we've got about six days' worth of storage. And then, we've hit our cap in the squad cars, and we wouldn't be able to offload it.
But can you add memory? I mean, you know, like banks on the server that we got now?
The new one? Yes, we could do that.
No, no, I'm talking to even the old one.
Nope, the old one is...
Obsolete.
It's probably gotta be at least eight years old.
Obsolete by now.
Yeah, I mean, essentially. You couldn't put...
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah, you couldn't put the updated operating system on it and have it run.
But aren't you... Are you getting a new server too?
There's a new server already in the storage room that's ready to go. The old server is on its last leg. It hasn't been replaced. It should have been replaced several years ago. So, the new server is there. And it's my understanding, when talking to Jeff, that you can add banks of storage onto this new server to take care of the video squad part of it.
That's it.
And I don't know how much that is. We'd have to figure that out, but... And I do know in talking to Jeff that the software, because it's been bought so long ago, is no longer able to be run on the new stuff, so it's... We need to buy new software also.
The primary advantage to not just adding additional storage to the city server is it puts it in a completely separate system. So, from a hacking standpoint, that stands totally free from the city's system.
Don't need a firewall.
Right. The other advantage for us is we run twenty-four seven. The city's support is not twenty-four seven. WatchGuard support is. So, the system we would be buying for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars is support for that system, hundred percent. Call them in the middle of the night on a holiday, and somebody's gonna answer it and help us get that system back up. Because they would be the ones in charge of maintaining the support on that system. Which, again, to me, is tremendously valuable.
What's the warranty on it? I thought I saw ten years?
Five, five years of, five years of total support. Our IT consultant said that, at the end of the five years, we probably would be able, much like our current system, it lasted all the way through Windows Seven. It wasn't until Windows Ten that it had problems. We're still making it work, but it's not working as intended. So, he figured that we could probably get somewhere between seven and eight years at a minimum, ten years as a maximum lifespan out of it. And the last, the last after five years, we would just have to purchase that support as needed.
Right. So, what are the wishes?
Well, I, I think we should take this, as Jeff has broken it down into two different things. The first one with the squad car video server, the thirteen thousand five hundred, I don't have a problem with. And I would be willing to make a motion to approve that part.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Okay, what do we get with that, Jeff? Now, your video, your video, your squad videos are okay?
So, for that, what that's gonna do is that's gonna provide us with the server, the five years of warranty, five years of support, all of that.
What I'm talking about.
It's gonna be the newest version of the video evidence library. That system is Linux system, so it operates completely in Linux. But it, because of that, my understanding is they can create an interface to Windows Ten, Windows Twelve, Windows whatever, and not have to rely on Windows to actually run it. All it does is just display the images within whatever that operating system is. And that would give us the installation, the support, the everything for that, for that thirty-five or thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Which really isn't a bad price.
I think it's a tremendous bargain when we have gotten a...
We've gotta do it.
We gotta keep our squad car videos going.
Yep, we've gotten so many years out of use out of the, the old system that we bought in XP, and it's been pretty much trouble-free. I think they build good software, good hardware, and that's why I was recommending them.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to...
It already got a second by Derek.
Yes.
Did you have something?
No, I seconded it.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion and second. And discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good.
Passed.
I wanna thank Council for splitting it and handling those as two separate things, because when I bundled them together, it wasn't an intention to, you know, misinform you. It was just I was looking at a whole package.
No, it makes sense.
At first part, definitely is needed for the squad system to continue.
Right, yeah.
And now, I welcome any discussion Council has relative to the second part.
Well, I wish we lived in a world where we didn't need body cams. I wish people were honest. Unfortunately, to me, it's almost like insurance. There it's an officer who does something wrong, or a civilian who makes a complaint against an officer, and it's, you know, nope, we have a video of what happened. So, yeah, I guess, to me, I almost see it as an insurance thing. We've seen all the videos on the news. People have cell phones out all the time. I think it's nice to have the police perspective, a video too, if something bad were to happen.
So, I wanna just clarify something. I apologize. Looking at my, where I wrote my memo, I did not break out the twenty-four fifty into the two different numbers. So, the cameras by themselves without the redaction software were sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, while the redaction software would have been seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. In the memo, I have that as a total twenty-four five hundred, which could be confusing for Council. I apologize for that.
I see.
I'll respectfully disagree with Derek. A small town our size, I don't see the need for body cameras. We know even with our projected twenty-two-one police budget, our, our police budget is still, in my mind, two hundred thousand dollars more than it should be. The chance of us really needing the body camera for a small town, of which there aren't that many in Minnesota that use body cameras. Even our own county sheriffs do not use them. I just don't see the need to spend that, that money for that. Squad car thing was fine, because that's, you gotta have that, but that's my opinion.
Is this money already in the budget?
This would be for, using forfeited money, so it's not general fund expenses.
Okay.
So, yes, it is, it is sitting there waiting to be, be used for this or for some other legitimate authorized purpose. I think it's a great thing that a town our size and our location, being on the border of what's considered a metro county with Dakota, we've been ahead of the curve on this. And I think sometimes when we compare ourselves to other communities in our county and in our region, I think we fall into this trap. There's leaders and there's followers. And we have been a leader in this category for about a decade. I don't see a reason to give up on this and say, "Well, yeah, we've had it for, since two thousand and eleven, but we don't need this to continue just as a cost-saving measure." I think being ahead of the curve and protecting our officers and protecting our civilians is, is a good thing, much like what Derek had said. And yeah, I understand, and right now, we wanna pay attention to costs. But if this is a tool that they need to effectively do their job, and looking at this report, I think that the chief is being more economical with only five cameras than trying to continue limping along with something that's a handful of years old and obsolete, and the batteries are dying in the winter, and, and trying to keep those things going. I think this is much like the, the server. Sooner or later, it's gonna, you know, have to be done if we're gonna stay this route, and I don't see any reason to, to not.
Jeff, excuse me. There's my TB again.
I was gonna say.
My, my biggest issue, my biggest concern with body worn cameras, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I watch too many police shows, but... Boy, it's very selective when you turn those puppies on, isn't it? I mean, is there, I mean...
So, our policy is written that gives the officers discretion. However, our training and protocols essentially ask them to turn it on with every contact. And it doesn't matter if it's, you know, a nineteen-year-old that's out of control or a ninety-two-year-old that has dementia. We recommend that they, they turn it on, and that's actually how it's primarily used. It gets activated for almost every contact.
There's also the issue of, well, everything happens so fast, I couldn't remember everything.
Yep, now...
Now, it's, now it's, well, where's your body camera?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. This new camera system actually is much like our squad video. It's always running and is able to go backwards and give us pre-event recordings. So, if an officer gets a call, jumps out, and something really, really bad happens, and they don't get it turned on, the only thing we wouldn't necessarily have would be the sound, because it's always recording, but it doesn't record with audio unless it's activated. Now, if the officer responds in an emergency manner, this is gonna turn on not only the squad video to start recording, but it's gonna turn on the body camera to start recording. So, the system's designed to minimize the potential for the officer to go to an emergency call and forget to turn it on. That our new current system does not have. Our current system does not have post-event record. So, we can't use it on the body cameras. We have used it in our squad cars. Typically, they capture about twenty to thirty hours, depending upon if it's high definition or low. And when we've had burglaries or robberies or that type of stuff, we've gone back and pulled all the video from the squad cars for the last day and then watched that video to see if any similar suspect vehicles could be identified just from that routine driving around. So, moving to the V three three hundreds gives us that capability on the body cameras as well. Chief, how big of a hindrance would it be if that extra seven thousand five hundred, that redaction software, if we just got the cameras but avoided the extra software? With concerns about budget, my recommendation would be buy the cameras, forego the software. And if we find ourselves in a position where we have to use it, we're either gonna try to find a vendor that can do a one-time job for us, or you're seeing me back in front of you guys explaining why I need to spend that money then. Yeah.
Well, I think it's my turn, unless you had more questions, Steve? He was just wondering.
I have a lot more. I just, I've, I've been waffling on this, and, and that, that one concern is my main concern. And, and I, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, and I, I trust everyone of you guys to give a hundred percent all the time, but... Can it go dark? I mean...
It's, it's an electronic device, so could it go, go bad? Yep, we just had a squad video, squad system that was having microphone problems. It turned out it was a bad cable. We replaced the cable, and then everything started functioning correctly again. These don't interface by a cable, but they have some sort of wireless connection that could go bad.
Okay, let's, let's, let me delve deeper into this darker side. Officer A, he, he wants to maybe talk to a citizen in a very unfriendly way. And the citizen files a complaint.
Yep.
And you say, "Officer A, I want your, your body camera." And there's no, there's nothing.
So, yeah, in that situation, two things would happen. First, we wouldn't necessarily go to Officer A. We would go back to see how long ago it occurred, much like the squad video. While the body camera's recording, and you can do post-records, it doesn't have the same capacity of storage. Like I said, the squad cars, we could record just normal traffic activity. Recordings would be about a week's worth. But that's also rewriting over the top of that constant record feature. So, eventually, we would run out of storage. So, on the body cameras, I don't know what that would be, if it would be two days, one day. I'm not sure, Steve. But if we had something like that happen and it got reported right away, we would go back to try to capture what we could. It would not, if it was not activated, it would not have audio anyway. But you could see the interaction. Is, you know, Matt's sitting in front of me, is Matt sitting there like that? Or is Matt animated and, you know, or is the officer's hands, oh, sorry, animated in front of the camera? So, I mean, you could get some sort of idea of that, you know, there was something going on, or is it just a friendly conversation?
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned that it might not be used in every circumstance that maybe benefits one person or the other, and that, and that's, that's my biggest thing. Is, is it gonna be, be used fairly unjustly?
I can tell you that in the past nine years that we've had them, the use of them has been very, very consistent, very, very good. We haven't had the problems that cities like Minneapolis or other large cities, as they adopted them. When we implemented them, every one of our officers started using them. Some of them were accidental activations. Our original systems required the officers to offload it. We had one officer who sometimes would get lazy, and so his partners would offload it for him. And then, you would find him getting out at one of our convenience stores, going like this, in the, in the, the door window before he went inside. And he took a lot of grief for that, but when he went on calls, he used the, the system. It's a fabulous tool. The officers realize the value that it provides them. When we first got squad car cameras, and you'd make DUI arrests, and the drunks would say something like, "I'm so drunk, I shouldn't be driving." The defense attorneys hated it.
What officer was that?
The defense attorneys hated it. But what's funny is, we've had squad videos now in, in squad cars here. They put them in in two thousand and six. I had them previously in another agency before the two thousands. They ran on VHS tape, believe it or not. And what's funny is, you still get those same statements being made today by drunks during, you know, DUI arrests. So, the cameras don't really affect the people that we interact with, and the officers are so used to them, it doesn't really affect the officers. We've had officers that have made statements that I didn't like the way they talked to somebody. And we've had discussions about that. But those cases are pretty rare. And that's one of the advantages that the system does give us, is that this, you know, sergeants, or not the sergeant, lieutenant routinely will watch just random videos to see how they're doing on their interactions.
Yeah.
Or when I stopped Matt for a traffic ticket, do I walk up and say, hi, you know, I'm Jeff McCormick with the Cannon Falls Police Department, the reason I stopped you today was this, which is how we want them to do it, as opposed to stopping Mary Jill and going, hey, you know why I stopped you?
I hate that. I've gotten that.
We're playing a guessing game.
Not that they've ever really stopped.
We don't play guessing games here. We want them to know who the officer is, and we want them to, the officer to tell them why they were stopped. And so from that aspect, it's a fabulous training tool. When we get into where, thank goodness, I was mentioning this to Neil earlier, we haven't had to train an officer for a while, it's a fabulous training tool to use on an officer in training, because the, the officer's doing the training, and the recruit can sit down with the lieutenant, and they play back some of these, these contacts, and they can see where they do things good, where they do things not so good, and where they can improve. So I can't guarantee you that it's always gonna be there and record everything that we want, but they're a darn good system, whether it's this one or what we're currently using. The officers use them on a very, very regular basis, and if they are doing something they're not supposed to be doing, and the camera should have been on, they lose the benefit of the doubt that they did what they claimed they did. And I think that's a fair way to explain it to the officers. It captures a three-dimensional image in a two-dimensional format. It can't capture everything, and I know that, but it is a fabulous tool that can help eliminate did the officer actually swear at them or not, if you can watch that video, because you can hear the words that were said.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. If you want to repeat what you wanted, you've got it, right?
No one's made a motion yet.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
Oh, Jeff can't make a motion.
I thought we were all waiting for me to speak.
Oh, that's okay. I apologize, Mary Jill did ask that, and then Steve said, no, he had more questions.
Yes.
Anyway, at the finance committee meeting when we discussed this, I will, full disclosure is, I was out-recommended, because I was in favor of basically doing all of this, and my reasoning is, if, if we didn't already have body cams, I might not make the leap. But, boy, I know what it's like to be in any kind of workplace, and then they take something away that you used to have, and that's not reason enough in and of itself to keep it going, but I don't believe in going backwards in technology if you don't have to. And my second reasoning for this is, anybody who's ever worked for Paul Bringle knows, he says, or used to say, good equipment doesn't cost, it pays. We may not need it now, until that time, we do need it, and, I don't know, I don't think it's that much of an investment. The lion's share of it is the server part, anyway, but I would go along with this, especially given that he's pared down his request from twelve to five, or whatever it is.
Well, if we did everything for the body cameras, it was twenty-four, five, just the, the cameras themselves would be sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty.
I would, I would be okay making a motion for that, and then see what about the redaction stuff later, but that's the way, so that's what I would do, is make a motion for the body cams only.
Members of the council, if you, I don't know if you can hear me, but if you want a legal perspective on this, body cams are a good tool for hopefully limiting liability. I think Derek touched on this, and maybe Mary Jill as well, you know, when you have allegations that an officer did something wrong, you know, maybe a hundred percent of that won't be caught on body camera, hopefully a large portion of it will be caught, and then if it is, then you can either, if the officer did something wrong, you can address that with that officer. If they didn't do anything wrong, you can prove they didn't do anything wrong, so it's a very useful tool from that perspective, limiting legal liability. That says nothing about the budget issues, that's for the council to decide, but I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, but the only thing worse than an eyewitness is your own witness, sometimes. You just don't remember what happened. It's just the nature of it.
Yeah. I like what you said, too, because right now, we're in, we're going to be in tougher economic times, so we look at spending, but if this lasts for eight to ten years, yes, we're, we're taking it now, but like you said, it will pay off in the future.
I think the investment's worth it, but that's me.
Is this money also coming out of the-
Yes.
-secret fund? Yep, it's not secret, it would be coming out of forfeiture funds, so when we get a DUI or drug forfeiture, the, the formula's set by statute, we just have to spend it for a lot of purposes, which are essentially DUI or drug enforcement components.
Mary Jill's motion was just the cameras minus the redaction software.
Leaving out the redaction software.
So it's like sixteen, five, right?
Yep.
Sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty.
Sixty-six, twenty, yeah. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I am gonna make this loud and clear, but we'll, I, I'm for this, and if it passes, that's fine, but if, if we see a trend with, with issues of forgetting to turn them on, or there's, oh, we didn't, some, for some reason that didn't catch it, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna meet.
Yeah, well, we, if, if we have that trend, then what I would recommend is that we make some changes to the policy that, that governs it, which we could do, but I can't make those changes and just implement it, it would have to come back for a, a public hearing, and then council approval of that through statute.
I just wanted to put that out.
No, that makes sense, Steve. I agree with you there.
Okay, so Mary Jill made the motion, Steve seconded it, we've had some discussion. Any more discussion? Not hearing any? We will vote. In favor?
Aye.
No?
I, I oppose.
So it's five to one, or no, four to one.
Well, you get to vote, too. You get to vote.
I can vote, yeah.
So is it four to two, or five to one?
Five to one. No, not five, that makes, yeah, okay.
Oh, I should get my son in here.
I got mixed up as John.
No, I should get my son in here, he can maybe count to six. I'm not sure. Sometimes I wonder.
Yeah, right.
I don't know.
We have to ask him for clarification.
That is a question.
Okay, so that's part of it now. What are we doing for the second?
Five, one, okay. No, that was the second one.
That was the second one, we're leaving the redaction software off for now.
The one we just voted on was the body camera.
Yeah, right, right.
No redaction software.
Okay, so.
And my understanding is, council, is we're not going to address the redaction at this time. Is that correct?
Right.
And I'm good with that. We will move forward and see where we are.
Yeah, if that's something that lasts every eighteen months, you can just get it one time.
Yep.
Okay.
So reports. Let's see, council committees.
Kyle.
I'll go with Kyle.
Sitting too long. Sorry. Good evening, council and community. I first want to thank the entire community, the police force, the volunteers, the families, and all of the trick-or-treaters that came out for our Halloween trick-or-treat trot last Friday. It went from three to five o'clock. The estimate was six fifty to seven hundred-
Wow.
-children.
Actually, over seven hundred, I think, oh, seven twenty.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
And so, but that takes the community to do that.
Right.
What I did hear from the vendors is, they felt that over ninety percent of the people had masks on. You could also see where the families would pause and then go forward so that they had social distancing.
Right.
And so that, to me, was a very, very successful event, and I want to thank everyone for being a part of it.
Kyle, if I could add to that?
Yes.
We, I had citizens that said what a success that was, but also, COVID aside, in the future, they really liked the control of the pedestrian traffic. They said it was safer, knowing which direction to go, and I know the chief was out there directing traffic, it was a very safe night for pedestrians, it was safe for the cars, it was just very well done all around.
And that will definitely stay. We will go in one direction. I'll need to buy more chalk. Okay, then we're on to Deck the Falls, and that is a 5:00 PM parade, which we are looking for units to be in that parade. And a unit can be your truck, your car, your lawnmower with lights on it, just to make it flashy, because remember, it's gonna be dark. There is no fee to have a unit in the parade, and the more parade units we have, the more people we will continue to get to come for the parade. After the parade will be the lighting of the tree, and the fireworks will follow that. And thank you very much for approving the permit tonight. That was wonderful. We do have a registration form for the parade units. The deadline is November twentieth, and so if you need one, please contact the chamber office, and like I said, the more, the merrier. So Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are already on board, and so, you know, churches, 4-H clubs, whoever can be a part of it. You don't have to be, you don't have to be in Cannon Falls, you don't have to be a member of the chamber, it can be any public person. Any questions about that? Okay? We will be doing a lot of the face masks is required, social distancing will be needed. We will be posting that you can get out of your car in the parking lots, but we want everyone to be on the river side of your vehicle, so that way, this family is over here, the next family is on the other side of their vehicle, and that way, we're keeping that distance again. We will be doing a listing of parking areas, and so the overflows, you know, if you have other parking areas that you know of, let us know, so we can get them on the list and we can publicize them. Okay? Couple other new quick announcements, Aqualand Aquarium. It has been a while, but they are open.
Great.
And it's been steady. There's been people in there all the time. They are open Thursday through Monday, noon to 6:00 PM. So noon to 6:00 PM, beautiful fish, and it'll be fun to have them around. We also have a new shop, boutique kind of shop, coming in the weekend of Deck the Falls, the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth, and it's called From the Hearts. And Cheryl Sibenauer put this kind of group together. Right now, it has thirty vendors. It can be any kind of craft, homemade thing. They will be all displayed at Wykert Realty. Homemade cookies will be offered also, and so I hope you mark your calendars so you can get down to Wykert's for From the Hearts. There will be some really nice gift ideas for Christmas. Okay? That is what I have.
All right.
Do we have any questions?
No, I just want to say about Aqualand, they're going to be bringing in people from Rochester, the cities. His store was on Fiftieth and Nicollet, I don't know, Chicago, maybe, and he's a big, big operator, and so we're gonna be seeing more new people in town.
Absolutely.
So that's great.
And the reason they decided on Cannon Falls, not, they live here, but they had so many customers coming from Rochester to go all the way to the cities, and it was like, wait a minute, we live here. So, and I mean, the southern part of the cities will be able to just drop right down here rather than going downtown, and so I think they've got a great plan.
Yeah, they have.
They do. There is one piranha. And there was one other fish in that tank. I didn't stick around to see what happened. And so also on our board of directors, we do have one opening for 2021, and so we are interviewing candidates at this time, and that will be announced towards the end of November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Mary Jill, do you have anything on the finance, or trail, or whatever?
Uh, trail? Did they? We didn't, no, okay. Yeah, well, they don't have as much to do in the fall, but no.
What about your area?
Planning commission?
Yeah.
Um, we didn't have a meeting last month. We have one on Monday, coming up, yep.
Okay. The EDA.
I have a picture report.
Okay. How about all the other stuff that you're involved with?
There's gotta be a reason you came here.
I don't think we want to be here all night.
No, no. It's nice to see you in person versus up there, because usually you're in, what, Manorville or something?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's good that we're on a Thursday.
We're on not a Tuesday night, so, whereas it works better for me to be in person.
Okay, did I miss over somebody? Anybody? Okay.
You missed the library.
Oh, the library.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't.
Didn't even see you're in there, on there.
Nicole, are you up in the Bounder Waters or something? You got the Northern Lights going?
No. I, I discovered a few weeks ago the Zoom backgrounds and so I'm having fun with them.
Okay, all right.
So, you know, um, there's not a whole lot of update for the library, we're still status quo, but as the weather's getting colder, we're gonna be doing more virtual programming, and one of them is, we're, we're resuming our crafting, but we're doing it in a very different kind of fashion, where you can get, you can reserve a kit, we'll get it ready for you, and then you can watch the YouTube video on your own time. So Angie has prepared a craft, I wish I had it with me, I could have shown it to you. It's, it's a little tea light holder with leaves on it, and so that's the craft for next week, and it's gonna be uploaded onto our YouTube channel on Monday, and you can reserve a craft kit anytime over the week. And a couple, in a couple of weeks, I'm gonna be doing the watercolors for Peace, so you can reserve your kit, and we'll have it ready for you, and then you can watch it on your own time on our YouTube channel. We are, today, or sorry, not today, this week, because the weather app is so fabulous, I am going to be doing the Fit Fridays at Eastside Park. I was going to transition to Zoom at noon, so people can do it and still get the interaction, but I figure we'll do that in a couple of weeks when the weather's a little here, and we'll enjoy the really nice weather this Friday, which is tomorrow. And just look at our website and look at our Facebook page, we're, we're doing more that with interactive programming, and it's all starting this month. And I do believe that is it. So if any of you have any questions, I'm here.
I've seen now that you're going straight on late fees, not charging them?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of libraries have been doing that, and especially even during COVID, because it, it's a good way to get people to feel comfortable coming back, especially with the fact that people's incomes are really, really tight, and sometimes things happen and you just can't return your library book. And actually, interesting fact, Red Wing's doing that, too, and they, their city council has approved paying, I think a hundred and fifty thousand to various libraries, or libraries around the system, for outstanding fines that Red Wing patrons owe. So this is, this is a trend, and considering our fine income is only like two thousand dollars a year, it, it was kind of a weighing DUI- it was kind of a weighing, do we want the bad feelings that people can harbor toward us for like that 25 cent fee? Or do we want to just say, we can work around that $2,000?
Well, and I think, too, Nicole, when we discussed it at the board level, the thought was, it was, it costs so much to administer and collect and record and everything. That that, I mean, I would think, my guess would be, easily costs us $1,200 to get that $2,000. So.
Yeah.
That was my feeling on it, anyway, at the time, so.
Yeah, and the entire library board tended to agree. So, that's what we went to. And we had even kind of done an experiment with extending our grace period to seven days, and found that that really did help a lot of people.
Okay, well, that's good, too.
And we did that a year and a half ago.
Right, okay.
That's great. Mary Jill, do you have anything?
Nope.
Matt?
Not city-related, but another organization, the Cannon Falls Education Foundation, held an event the same night as the trick-or-trot, and it went very well. And I think people were aware of trying to be safe and socially distant, and still, I just want to thank the downtown businesses, because that organization said, you know, those businesses have helped support the school, and it was a win that night for both. It was nice to have a little bit of normalcy and a little bit of being social. And also, I just want to thank everybody here on the city level, the staff that made Election Day such a success. They had a long day, they did a lot of work, but coming here to vote. The numbers were great. The turnout for our town, it was well-done. And I just want to say thank you to all of them.
I just want to congratulate Matt, Steve, Derek, and Laura for winning council seats. Morris, I will hate to see you go. Unfortunately, we've found out, at least at the national level, this country is extremely divided, and there doesn't appear to be any pansia to fix it. So, hopefully, nothing bad will happen on that. But anyway, congrats to all you guys and lady.
Derek?
Nothing tonight.
Steve?
Just kind of what Matt said. Thanks to the citizens that decided to put their faith in me again for another two years. And the public input isn't just here for three minutes. You can call me. You can email me and discuss anything you want.
I just want to say thank you to council for approving the video server. That, I think, will allow the city server to move forward now that we've got an idea that this other system can replace it. And now it'll just coordinate that timing to get that accomplished. So, that's all I have.
Neil?
Got a couple of things. One of the first things that was discussed with me when I got here was a pond up by Grove Street that has trouble overtopping and running into the backyards. And we did go up there this week, since it was nice. And we got Goodyear County Soil and Water up there, and our engineer, and we're in the process of looking for a solution. The solution is not simple, of course. Nothing ever is. But at least we're looking for one, and you'll be hearing more about it in the future. Hopefully, by next year, we can provide an answer to what's going on there. The second thing is, our RFPs for legal services are due tomorrow. I believe we'll, the way we did it for the engineering, worked out pretty good. We'll set a work session. Pending who or how many we have, we may interview all of them. Right now, as we speak, we have four. So, if we don't get any more than that, I would just suggest that we interview all four. Because I think, how many engineering did we do? Four?
Four.
So, that kind of sets the bar.
Worked good.
So, that's due tomorrow by 3:00 o'clock. And thirdly, the transit bus that runs around town, Cannon Falls will be getting a new one for 2021. The cost share match on that is 10%, so expect a $9,200 bill sometime in 2021. That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to the city business, and adhere to applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Do we have anybody for public input? Anybody for public input? Anybody for public input? Hearing none? Let's see, special city council meeting, Thursday, November 12th, at 5:30. EDA is Thursday, November 12th, at 7:00 a.m. And planning commission, you said it's Monday. Library board is Monday. And that's about it. Anybody, anything else? If not?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was quick.
Go ahead. Oh, you, who said?
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He seconded, yeah.
Who said they had a question? No, I thought I heard somebody say, "I got a question." Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Where's the?